Second, at ten oh one AM, all those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that, I think there's a slight delay between when I talk and when you hear it. So, moving on to public comment, I'm told we don't have anyone in the room at this point for public comment. I believe, though, John might need an addition to the agenda.
Yes, according to the annual resolution that we do, the administrator has the ability to authorize emergency expenditures, and I unfortunately had to authorize one yesterday for a single case agreement for a child placement through CYS. So I am humbly requesting that we place that matter under administrator's report for ratification of an emergency expenditure.
So, do we need a motion for that, John?
I think it'd be appropriate to add that, yes.
All right, take a motion for that item.
Okay, I will move that we add an item under the administrator's report to ratify board approval for an emergency placement for a child.
I will make the second available for that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add an item under the administrator's report to approve an emergency placement for a child. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, thanks, John. Wanted to add that to the agenda. Moving on to the meeting minutes, we have a couple of meeting minutes to approve. The Board of Commissioners meeting from November eighteenth and the work session from November twentieth. If those meeting minutes are good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the meetings held on November eighteenth and twentieth.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the meetings held on November eighteenth and twentieth. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. And now we have one of the most important things, at least from the commissioner's viewpoint, during the entire year, and that is introducing the proposed 2026 budget to the public. Kind of assuming I hand this over to John at this point, and then maybe you'll hand it over to Richard.
Sure. So, it's been a difficult budgeting process, but Richard and his team have stepped up for the challenge, and we have a proposed 2026 budget to present to you this morning, and with your authorization would open up the 20-day public review period. So with that, I'll turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. My team and I appreciate the Board of Commissioners' leadership through this budget season leading up to this moment. The county's total real estate tax millage remains unchanged, therefore no increase in real estate taxes for the sixteenth consecutive year. The proposed budget reflects a 2.2% increase in real estate tax revenue based on assessed value and tax revenue trends. The total operating budget of nearly $117 million is a 1% decrease from 2025. The proposed capital budget is $3.1 million. The combined total budget is $120 million, a decrease of $11 million from the prior year because of a reduction in ARP, American Rescue Plan funding, and completion of a new community services building. The budget includes $12.6 million contribution to the employees' health insurance and retirement plan, an increase of 7.7%. It also covers total personnel costs of $48.2 million, an increase of 5.2%. Our grants reimburse 40% of all personnel costs. This is the breakdown of the operating budget by function. This chart illustrates how the county's resources are allocated across its major functional areas, the largest is human services, public safety, and judicial. These categories reflect not only local priorities, but also the county's role in delivering programs fulfilling responsibilities established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The next slide is expenditures by category with personnel costs at the largest at 41%, followed up by contracted services, which are primarily related to grants through our human service agencies, and operational costs. Revenues total $115 million, a decrease of 1% from the 2025 budget. These are the revenue categories for 2026. Grants is the largest, at 43%, followed by real estate tax at 27%, and then charges for services is the third-largest category. We're estimating the use of, excuse me, use of general fund reserves of $2 million to support funding of county sources. Historically, over the past 10 years, however, we have used reserves to balance the budget only 35% of the time. This is an indication that we budget fairly conservatively. We forecast that we'll be maintaining a general fund reserve of 15% of total operating expenses, which is within best practices as set by the Government Finance Officers Association. Today begins the 20-day public comment period, and a copy of the budget will be available in the commissioner's office December 23rd at a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. You'll be considering the adoption of the 2026 budget. That's all I had at this time, and this is any questions?
Thank you, Richard. I think the three commissioners will speak briefly now, ask questions, highlight what we'd like to highlight. But the finance controller and Commissioner Department teams overcame numerous obstacles to present the 2026 Center County budget today. Thank you very much. For the 225th year in a row, Center County government is planning to pass the county budget on time. For the 16th year in a row, there will be no increase in the Center County government property tax millage rate. As most of the county's costs to deliver services are increasing faster than the 1% to 2% annual growth of the county real estate tax revenue, this does become more difficult every year. Delivering $117 million in services with only $31 million in property tax revenue would not be possible without the generosity of people and providers of the Center County. We also appreciate the hundreds of grants that the county receives from state and federal sources, providing roughly 40% of our funding. As Richard mentioned, this budget does include a $1.9 million budget deficit, but Center County's draft budgets for the last decade or so have sugar deficits, but we have experienced deficits only about a third of the time. And these deficits would experience have been substantially smaller than the forecast. This budget is a team effort with contributions from the 560 Center County employees, the law offices, the courts, administration, department heads, managers, supervisors, and the staff that perform 52 different types of services. Appreciate our partnerships with nearly 100 human service agencies and hundreds of additional suppliers. Thanks for your efforts. We have taken tough positions during the budgeting process this year, and will reduce the county's operating budget by 1% in 2026. We will continue to stay focused on meeting the needs of the 160,000 people in Center County, and now I'll pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion for her comments.
Well, I think Commissioner Higgins covered it quite thoroughly. I'd really like to thank Richard and John for all of your efforts in bringing us a budget that does not require raising property taxes this year. And this is, I think, now the 15th year of no increase in human services block grant funding from the state of Pennsylvania, which adds an extra strain as well. But, you know, it's really, you know, a great deal of credit to all of our departments for, you know, being very careful in their budgeting, prioritizing what's most important to meet the needs of Center County citizens. And it was especially challenging pulling this budget together when the state budget was so incredibly late. So not knowing what we were going to have to work with in the state, you know, added an actual level of challenge. But grateful for the work that's gotten us to this point so far.
And Commissioner Dershowitz, you've done 22 of these things. We'd like to hear your perspective, too.
I think my, I'll start with, you know, we have the discussion about having to take $2 million from our reserves, and I would hope over the next 20 days while we review this budget, we can take an opportunity to try to minimize that impact below $2 million if it's possible. And I know there's some things that, I understand that over the course of the year, you know, a budget's good for one minute in one day, and it's a snapshot, and we work toward, you know, more efficiencies, but I think, given the structural deficit that we have impacted here, I think we need to really look at it early and try to figure out ways that we can save that money. Because you can't sustain structural deficit after structural deficit and keep your tax rate level. So I would hope that we would be able to have a conversation and also, as well as that, is to look at what we can do to keep expenses throughout the year under control so we don't have that $2 million deficit. Other than that, I would tell you that I think it's a pretty lean budget for the most part, and it's optimistic in many ways. We don't see the growth in real estate value that maybe we did traditionally 20 years ago, but we, you know, we work around that, and hopefully we'll see some opportunity to keep this budget on course so we can continue this path for a number of years forward, so. That's my thought for the day.
Well, great, thank you, Steve. Let me double-check if there was anything else that needed to cover. I necessarily think so, unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion to adopt the 2026 tentative county budget.
I will move that we adopt the 2026 Ten of County budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2026 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to Resolution Number 19 of 2025, a resolution for Center County government to approve tax-free financing by Center County Hospital Authority for a project at the Medical Center. And assuming, do I hand it over to John, and he'll make the introductions from there?
Sure, so we have several representatives from the hospital here to speak to this request for a resolution. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you for having us on the agenda today.
Is there a green light?
There's a red light now. Good now?
There we go.
Thank you. I'll get this down sooner or later. I'm Tom Schrack. Again, thank you for having us on today's agenda. I'm here for the Center County Hospital Authority. Brian Roach from Mountain Nittany Health is here as well. We are here today requesting the board's approval of a resolution supporting a financing project that's being undertaken by the authority on behalf of the Mountain Nittany Medical Center. This project is a refunding project. It is to refund past bonds that were issued by the authority in 2016 and 2018. On behalf of the Medical Center, the market, the current climate is right where some savings can be achieved through this refunding project. The authority, as you know, is a municipal authority that pursues financing projects for healthcare. It consists of a board of appointees that are appointed by the commissioners. The Board of the Authority did hold a meeting on October 28th. There was support for the project, it was approved. The authority found that savings in healthcare is always a good thing. And so, we are here today to seek your approval of a resolution that would find that the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the county would be furthered through this project. There's no TEFRA hearing that's required for this because it's a refunding project, but nonetheless, under the Municipal Authorities Act, there is this piece of the act that says that the local government board does need to make this finding. So that's the last piece that we have before we can move forward here. And our goal, our closing date is the 11th of December, so we're hoping that if you would find that this resolution would be acceptable. We did send it, the solicitor had reviewed it, and my understanding is approved the form of the resolution as well. So we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, we'd definitely like to thank you for coming. The Mountain Nittany Medical System is a key partner for Center County government. You work with a lot of our human service agencies, you work closely with the coroner's office, the courts. We really appreciate everything you do. Dr. Abadi does a lot of different work with our 911 department and EMS and a lot of our volunteer emergency responders. I myself am a patient in the medical system. So we very much support what the hospital is trying to do here and appreciate your coming here in public and asking for our approval. I'll pass it on to Commissioner Concepcion for any additional comments.
Yeah, glad to see there is an opportunity for financing that would be advantageous and happy to support this.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I am well, I as well am very impressed by your system. Have used it numerous times. Actually, it used to inhabit this very building, so we're well familiar, and I was actually a patient back then, so. One of the things that I'm, and I'm really glad that you have the opportunity to refund bonds because saving money makes sense. One of my concerns with our medical system as it stands right now is there are one or your fellow providers that has, I think in my humble opinion, abused the hospital facility fee situation here in the county and charging hospital facility fees for procedures that don't necessarily lend themselves directly to the hospital system. And I would hope that I would have some confirmation from you folks that you understand that concern, and that's a deal breaker for me.
So, I'll take this. Hi, Happy Holidays, everyone. Brian Roach, CFO for Mountain Nittany Health System. So thanks for the question, and I can confirm, I'll do a short answer. Is, yes, we can confirm that there's no expected changes here in the near term. And I'll actually do an elongated response to that, starting with our mission statement. Healthier people, stronger community. But what does that actually mean practically for the community and our patients? Two things, I think, come to mind. One is improving access to care and having a good experience in that access. And then second is expanding services so folks travel less for their care. And, you know, to accomplish those two things, you know, you need a bottom-line margin. And our bottom-line margin, our investments in the community that are not just visible through the brick and mortar, our tower, what we're doing in Bolzberg and Belfont, in our technology, it trickles down through the economy of all these projects, and it's more than just brick and mortar, it's technology. And I think you guys have heard me say this before when I've come on to request funding for other projects, is we want to attract and retain and develop the best talent. We want to give folks the best infrastructure, technology, and equipment to work with and in, and we want to streamline processes, elevate everyone's role in the organization. If we do that on a foundation of trust, best opportunity to deliver world-class care and experience for our patients and our community, and I say all that as the foundation to kind of go back to your question. I said, no, there's nothing, you know, in the near term. You know, I've been here since 2019, and Kathleen and Brian, our CEOs, have been here, you know, several years prior to that. In that time, we have not changed any of our designations of our outpatient clinics, nor do we plan on doing so. To the contrary, with TOF trees and the opening of our outpatient endoscopy center, we actually took a procedures that were being done in the hospital or moving into a lower reimbursement, you know, lower patient cost setting. And so we're actually doing the opposite, and doing so to improve the patient experience, the right patient, the right doc, and the right appointment as soon as possible. So, you know, healthier people, stronger communities, we're here for.
I just want to say thank you, and that's music to my ears and music to the ears of many, many of the citizens of our county that we are charged to protect and defend, you know, against abuses. And I really appreciate that a lot. You've been fantastic to work with. Your work with our criminal...
Children's Advocacy Center?
Well, yeah, the Children's Advocacy Center. Thank you, you know, our criminal justice system and the DA's office and all the folks. But the advocacy center has been an absolute game changer in the way we deal with trauma and child crime victims. And I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. We appreciate it, and you really, I say this most honestly, it is music to my ears that you fully intend to keep the fee structure not only under control, but actually reduce it, and that means a lot. And it makes me very proud to support your efforts, so thank you.
Great, excellent questions, Commissioner.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to thank Commissioner Dershowitz for raising that concern because, you know, this is something that's really sensitive in our community right now, and it's really impacted a lot of people very directly. So I'm really pleased to hear that Mountain Nittany Health is not going down the same path as one of the other providers in our community and looking to keep costs transparent and, you know, as low as possible in a business that I know is really, really challenging right now in terms of cost control. So, thank you.
And I just want to end with, you know, I think you saw the, our budgeting process. So we're not completely new to what it means to have that leisure work. And so we appreciate all the things that you do to make things happen for our community, and you really are a community-based commodity that we really appreciate, and I can't thank you enough.
Yeah, the commissioners have heard from a number of citizens in Center County about the other health systems charging of facility fees. They're quite significant, and as I think both Commissioner Concepcion and Commissioner Dershowitz brought up, they're being charged for things that aren't hospital-level services. And it's great to hear that, if anything, Mountain Nittany is moving in the opposite direction. And at your new facilities, especially, I think, the new outpatient center at TOF trees, you're providing more significant services in a, I think you call them an ambulatory center, as opposed to a hospital, which keeps costs and fees lower. So very much appreciate your hundreds of millions of dollars of investment over the last few years in Center County.
And your skyline has changed, and I think it's pretty cool up there, too.
Well, we're changing the skyline in several locations. The tower is on track for completion next summer, but we have some other big projects. Bolzberg, right there on the corner of Athens, there in Bolzberg, it's going to be scheduled to open this spring. We'll be breaking ground in Belfont, actually a new home for the CAC and other services, so. And many other, many other projects, we're pretty excited.
Wonderful, well, I think we're all supportive, and now even more so that we're hearing that you're not going to be charging facility fees at the ambulatory centers, which ourselves and all the citizens of Center County very much appreciate. So it looks like, I believe, we are happy to move forward with adopting Resolution 19.
Commissioner Higgins?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Senderson has a question, if that's acceptable?
Oh, yes, certainly, sure. I think the new state and federal budget includes added funding for rural healthcare systems. Does Mountain Nittany qualify for that or to receive some funding like that?
We do receive funding from the state and federal governments for being rural, sole community hospital.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
All right, well, great, great question. Obviously, our rural health systems are definitely in need of support at this time. So it looks like we can take a motion to adopt Resolution 19?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 19 of 2025.
I will gladly second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 19 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate all the work for the health of Center County.
And Commissioner Higgins, can I make one more comment here? I just want to call out a colleague of ours, Scott Kaufman, who I think many of you know has been working at the health system for 35 years and is set to retire next week. So we thank him for his service, and I publicly want to acknowledge that and the great job he's done for not just our organization, but for all the patients in the community over 35 years. Thank you, Scott.
Trying to do some quick math, would he have been in this building?
He would have. He would have.
All right, perfect, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulating for us.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Indeed, thank you.
We'll now move on to contracts and authorizations. I think I see the dean of the Public Defenders in Pennsylvania, Dave Crowley, on remotely.
You mean the old guy?
Oh.
We're here to request approval of a denim to our Abacus contract. Abacus is our case management system, tells us where we have to be, and it provides information on the cases we're working on. We moved to the cloud a couple of years ago, and, well, we ran out of space a couple of months ago. So we're asking for this additional contract to keep our system from crashing.
Great, well, we do appreciate that you run a busy department, and we're also appreciating that at least temporarily you're doing the work of nearly two people. So thanks for that. Commissioner Concepcion, comments, questions?
No, I think this is good, I want to, you know, moving forward with ensuring we have what we need and for you to, you know, from a technology standpoint, to do what you need to do.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, looks like we can take a motion now.
Okay, I will move to adopt contract, amendment number two, with Abacus Data Systems, Inc.
I will second the addition of a terabyte of APC storage space.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract, amendment number two, with Abacus Data Systems, Inc., DBA, Carrot. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries, great, thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your day for us, too, you, too. All right, next one is probation, and I'm pretty sure he's probably in his office, but zooming in, we've got Ryan.
There he is.
Yeah, hey, good morning. I'm here for the board to consider the approval of the grant application for our annual grant made that we received from PCCD. This grant assists with adult officers' staff salaries. This year, we're expected to see another increase from the previous year, and we're looking at an amount of $111,885. And this grant runs from July 1st of '25 to June 30th of '26, so this would be retroactive. And this is an e-signature grant, so once I do apply and submit the grant, you guys would be getting a notification for signature for approval.
Great, well, obviously, we always appreciate grants, especially ones that go up the pit. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, thanks for pursuing this.
Excellent. Commissioner Dershowitz?
I just, I'm going to reflect back on the original discussion about the budget, and you see how much we rely on grant funds to operate this organization. And thank you for pursuing that and helping us, you know, defray the cost of doing business in, you know, Center County government, so, thanks.
Well, unless there's anything else, I think we'd be happy to take a motion to approve the grant.
I'll move to approve the grant application for the continuing county adult probation and parole grant.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the grant application for the continuing county adult probation and parole grant. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. And now we have, I believe, Kerry Hall to cover a grant application with Defense Department Commission on Crime and Delinquency that's a tiny bit bigger than the one that Ryan was just talking about, but I'm assuming the two of you worked together on this one?
Yes, that is correct. Good morning. This is our annual permanent punishment grant, looking for the board's approval to submit our grant application that is due September 18th. submit our grant application that is due December 18th. Our annual allocation is $130,000. That unfortunately has not increased in quite so many years. We've probably been getting these funds for over 20 years from PCCD, but the last several, we've not seen an increase. We were hopeful this year, but I think with the delay in the, in the state budget, that didn't happen. So, this allocation will run July 1st through June 30th of next year, also retroactive due to the delay. These funds support also partial salaries and benefits for four staff, two at probation and two in our drug and alcohol office. And then they also fund some different supportive services for our DUI drug courts, things like drug testing, continuous alcohol monitoring, the RAMP, which is our Risk and Needs Triage Software, so things of that nature. And then generally, at the halfway mark, which will be after the first of the year, we're able to request additional funds if counties have not used all of their allocation. And historically, the past several years, we've gotten additional funding to kind of help pay for more of the services. So, we'll see if we have that opportunity after the new year. But this is also an e-signature, so we haven't any paper signature forms this time, and it's due December 18th.
Good. Well, thanks for covering that. Carrie, was there anything you wanted to add, Ryan?
No, that's, she covered everything.
All right. Fine. Carrie, we very much appreciate you and the criminal justice team working hard to find those additional grants later in the year to kind of cover for the fact that that grant has not gone up in a while. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Simply that this, you know, this initiative is so important for, you know, as part of our diversionary system to help keep people out of the correctional facility who should not be there and who could benefit from the kind of supportive environment that these treatment courts provide. So, really, thank you for your work on going after, you know, the funding that helps keep this initiative going. And I know it takes a lot of work and an ongoing way to, you know, to make sure that we have the funding we need to continue with these initiatives and we see what difference it makes in people's lives. And I know all of the commissioners have had chances to hear from folks who have graduated from our treatment courts and about what a life-changing experience it has been for them. Thank you.
Great summary, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I am going to layer on to what Commissioner Concepcion just indicated. I think experience has taught us several things about the correctional facility, and one of them is just warehousing people by itself does not provide the type of environment, the experience, and the treatment that changes lives. And I think the treatment courts, you know, whether it's the drug court, the veterans court, the DUI court, has made an incredible difference in the lives of so many people and has changed the way we look at incarceration and punishment of folks. Because if you just expect the same thing to happen over and over and over without doing anything different, that's what you're going to get if you don't innovate. And Center County, I think, has been incredibly at the forefront of a lot of innovation of trying to change people's lives through treatment, and I'm happy to support it. Carrie, you've been at the forefront of that, and we really appreciate that. And Ryan, your shop has been absolutely fantastic, as well as the court administration and the district attorney's office and the public defenders. I think everybody's worked together to really change lives for so many people in Center County. And the proof is in the pudding, and I think we've, we've got a pretty good batch going. So, there you go.
Yeah. Excellent points from both commissioners. All the persons in the correctional facility are moms and dads, sons and daughters, people who could be productive in the community. And thanks for the hard work of our entire criminal justice ecosystem. We're keeping hundreds of people out of the correctional facility on an annual basis compared to other counties our size. And obviously, it's a lot of hard work in the groups that Steve just mentioned to do the work of rehabilitation and keep the Center County citizens safe. So, obviously, I think we're very supportive of this grant, and I believe we could take a motion.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the grant application for the intermediate punishment treatment program initiative.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant application for the intermediate punishment treatment program initiative. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Again, thank you, Ryan and Carrie.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
You, too. Now, are we going with John here or is it somewhere in the room?
Yes. I'll, I'll take this one.
He's plowing snow.
Yeah. It's pretty nasty, right?
He's a little preoccupied at the moment, yes. Before you, for consideration, is approval of a contract with Carisoft Technology for the purchase of ProCore project management software. This is a software that will assist the county's facility staff in actually doing in-house project management of some of our capital projects. This, for the cost of going outside of the county and securing project management services for a month or two, cost for outside help, we can, we can bring on this software and do it in-house for considerable savings. So, we are seeking approval to add the contract with Carisoft or ProCore to next week's consent agenda.
We definitely appreciated seeing increased professionalism skills in our facilities department. And it looks like, as John mentioned, maybe upwards of two months of hiring this work out would pay for the software. And maybe for smaller and medium-sized projects, we can now handle the management of this in-house. So, one of those tough decisions we're making, it looks like it should save us money over the law. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, I was really pleased when Jonathan brought this idea to us. And I think that, you know, that to the extent that we've been able to build up our own department here, I think it's going to save us over time. And, you know, having this kind of software just, you know, really expands our capacity to handle more complex capital projects in-house.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I just hope it demonstrates value, and I think that's, that's going to be the, again, another, another cost savings for us if it works, and it could be a significant tool for us to use in the future. So, hopefully, this will be a good, a good project and a good, a good software system. So, we'll find out.
Yeah. Well, sounds great. Looks like we could take a motion then.
I will move that we add the contract with Carisoft Technology Corp. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
With a motion and a second to add the contract with Carisoft Technology Corp. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And Jonathan, assuming you'll be covering the two-year contracts under facilities management?
Yes. So, the previous item was under capital. The next two are under our facilities. The first one is to consider approval of a contract with Wright Elevator for preventative maintenance of the four elevators at the new, newly renovated Community Services Building. The elevators were all updated and are in, next to new shape through the current project that had occurred. And this is preventative maintenance that will help us stay ahead of any major repairs moving forward. The second item is a contract addendum with Ehrlich Pest Control to provide interior pest control services at the Community Services Building as well. And the total for that project or contract is $5,175 for the coming year, or for two years. The January of, yeah, January of '26 through December of '27. So, we are seeking to add both of these items to next week's consent agenda.
Sounds good. Any questions from either commissioner on these two, two-year contracts?
Just, just actually one. Have we had any demonstrated pest issues at the, at the CSB building as of yet, or is this?
I think this is more on a preventative footing. Obviously, while the building was dormant, we had a little bit of activity there that we had to try to mitigate. But as far as I'm aware, there's, there's nothing that we're seeing at the moment. We'd like to keep it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion.
I'll move to add the facilities management items, one and two, to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the two items for facilities management to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And moving on to information technology services. Gosh, we, we need more storage. We'll be covering that. Is that John?
Chad's here.
Yes, good morning. This is another contract for additional storage. This is a contract addendum with CDWG to provide an increased storage space for SharePoint. SharePoint is a great resource for us to share documents and collaborate with internal and external partners that we work with. It's also a great platform for staff to be able to access documents in the office and also days like this where they may be working in other locations. So, this request is to increase our SharePoint space by five terabytes, to go from seven terabytes to 12 terabytes. This contract addendum is for $6,450, and it'll run from January 1st, 2026, to June 30th, 2026. And then after that, we'll be redoing our three-year enterprise agreement with Microsoft.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Chad. Questions from either commissioner on this item?
I'm just doing some quick math here and seeing that, you know, broken down by terabyte, you're getting a much better deal than the public defender.
I saw that, yes.
Yeah. Good work.
Yeah. Keep buying five instead of one.
Well, there you go. But, you know, just saying, 3,600 for one, 64 for five, you know, just doing some quick math there. Good job.
Thank you.
Is there any way, like, this is not a question for today in terms of approving this, but moving forward, to look at all the different ways the county is paying for storage, and is there a way, a way to combine this for some efficiency of scale?
Yeah, we do look at that across the board. For example, the one Public Defender Crowley talked about earlier, that is its own separate, unique system.
I'm sure, yeah.
And so, that's the kind of issue we run into with some of these systems allocate storage for their specific applications.
But there is, there is a comparison of value, though, that we can use.
There can be, yeah. Yeah.
A little difference in scale between those two organizations.
Perfect, perfectly said.
All right. Well, it looks like we could take a motion for the IT item.
Then I will move to add the contract addendum with CDWG LLC to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract addendum with CDWG LLC to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on to human services, we have an item for adult services. We'll be covering that.
Julia's here.
Julia, okay.
Good morning. So, before you, I have, asking for your consideration for the approval of revision number one to the Human Services Block Grant Fiscal Year 2324 Income and Expense Report. Adjustments were made based on a change in the path funding from the Department of Human Services. So, humans, Department of Human Services and our Human Services Block Grant members have gone back and forth, and finally, the state agreed with our allocation, and the adjustments were made. And so, this is in order for us to wrap up fiscal year 2324. This is our income and expense report to the state.
Well, thanks, Julia, for, you and the team for being persistent on that. Questions from other commissioner on the revision?
No, thank you.
Ah, no, I have no question. Thank you.
Unless we could take a motion then?
I'll move to approve the revision number one to the Human Services Block Grant Fiscal Year 2324 Income and Expense Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve revision one to the Human Services Block Grant Fiscal Year 2324 Income and Expense Report. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Moving on to the check run, I believe that would be Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, so the check that I'd like to recognize on our check run today is to the ARC of Center County. They're one of our crucial partners in providing services to individuals with intellectual disabilities in our communities. And with that, I would like to move that we approve the check run that is dated November 26th.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated November 26th. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the administrators' report, we did add an item there for emergency placement for a youth. I believe John will cover that now.
Yes. So, we had an unfortunate situation where we had to try to find emergency placement for a child for a temporary basis. Family Links is a service provider who we are now pursuing a regular contract with, but for the time being, we have a single-case agreement for emergency placement of seven days. And so, we are seeking a motion for the commissioners to ratify the administrator's emergency authorization for a single-case agreement for a child placement through Children and Youth Services.
Thank you, John. We appreciate the work within children and youth. It'd be probably dozens of phone calls it took to find an open bed, and in this case, we're just, we're needing to add a new supplier so that child can have a safe place to stay. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
No, thanks for taking care of this properly as it needed to be.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. No, that's fine. Appreciate all the work.
So, you need a motion from us then, John?
Yes, seeking a motion to ratify the administrator's emergency authorization.
Okay. I will move that we ratify the administrator's emergency authorization for a child placement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the administrator's emergency placement for a youth. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Moving on, Commissioner Concepcion, do we have a voters' registration report or is it up over there?
Not yet. Yeah, not yet.
All right. I don't believe we have any other announcements besides, hopefully, the roads are slowly beginning to improve. Everybody be careful out there. John, any executive sessions to report or hold?
None to hold. The board met on November 21st at, from 12:34 PM to 12:59 PM to discuss personnel matters.
Thank you, John. As a matter of our public meeting schedule, we will have our Employee Benefits Trust meeting today at 3:00 PM in the Willow Bank. And then on Thursday, we'll have the Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00 AM, and a Retirement Board meeting at 1:00 PM. And we'll take questions in the press at this point.
Can they hear me?
Yes. Just speak up a little bit so that I'll can pick.
I don't want to yell. I don't want to ruin the audience or worldwide scene of audience. Last night, State College Borough Council meeting during a work session on their budget, the subject of property reassessment came up. Has this board ever discussed that? Is that something on the radar or?
No.
Yeah, we're not currently looking at a reassessment, but I did just get an email earlier today that it is one of the three main priorities for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania to work something out with the legislature so that perhaps that is done on some sort of relatively standard schedule. But obviously, that could take a while to come to fruition.
Echoing with Steve saying, for this board in particular, it's not on the radar?
Not on the radar.
Gary, there's some issues that you have to discuss when you're discussing assessment, and one of them is tax fairness. And I think we've been assured by our assessment department that tax fairness in Center County is still very strong. that tax fairness in Center County is still very strong. So, that's really the bottom-line indication of whether or not it's necessary. And at this point, I do not think that it is.
Is it 30 years? Was 95 the last time?
94.
94. Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Well, let me double check. But unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion to adjourn at 10:51.
Then I will move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second at 10:51. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. So, we are adjourned.